...school committee to order. I'm Kathy Codien, the vice chair. Lorraine Moskow, the chair, is out of state on business. And Superintendent Clancy is in traffic on the Mass Pike and will be with us at some point during the meeting, but Tom Maguire is going to step up to the plate.
You got it.
Hokey doke. Okay.
Citizens comments.
So, yes, sir. Do you have a comment?
No.
Okay. Any citizens' comments? Seeing none, let's move on to the school committee chair updates. Lorraine has asked me to remind folks to have their subcommittee and advisory committee minutes reviewed, approved, and up to date. And if you send them to Alita, once they're approved, she will post them. There is a tri-town meeting next Wednesday, December 12th, in Lancaster. It's at the Prescott Building, which is the new town hall. And if you need something to -- a landmark, just look for people protesting outside the gazebo on the town green, and you'll know you're there. Then another reminder about January 26th, which is our budget workshop meeting. It runs in the morning. I don't know, does it start at eight or nine? Anybody remember?
We usually have breakfast at 8:30, and then the meeting usually starts at 8:30.
Okay, 8:30, and we go till about noon time, 12:00, 12:30. So please mark your calendars for that. Any questions? Great. At the last meeting, I mentioned that a number of us attended the MAS-C, MAS-S conference that was held in Hyannis about a month ago, four weeks ago. And I thought it would be good if folks who attended want to have an opportunity to speak briefly about what their experience is there. So I'm just going to go around and ask folks. Steve, do you have anything to share?
Yes, I do. I attended four sessions there in the two days. In the first session, I stumbled in on Thursday morning, was one of our esteemed chairman was there as one of the participants. And it was a good session. They were imparting how some of, you know, it was primarily, I guess, for new school committee members, and how meetings should go, and how, you know, what things should be done. And then I attended two sessions on school law. Lovely.
Right.
Boring. Wow. Legal, legalese. It was legalese. But the best session that I attended was the last one on Friday afternoon. And that was a session on lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and questioning students.
Wow.
And they were talking about a -- they gave a couple of examples. One from a larger school district that didn't expect any problems with easily accepting LGBTQ people, and one from a very conservative western -- from the western part of the state that was a small school district and a fairly conservative town. And they worked very hard to prepare the school or the town to accept LGBTQ or the open transgender, primarily they were talking about transgender students. And for some reason or another, the schedule on introducing it to the community had to be moved up very quickly because, I guess, the child was going into some very -- a very difficult psychological period. And so they -- and they found that it worked.
Wonderful.
They had no overt problems or covert problems with introducing it to the school system.
But did they have a protocol system before?
They had consultants. They had people who were there working with them and everything else. And they still -- they said it was -- and you know what? In talking to other people since then, especially young people, it's not a big deal with them. It's a big deal with us because of the way most of us were brought up, one way or the other, either society, or religion, or whatever. But to the young kids, they tend to accept their co-conspirators, I would say.
Yeah, peers.
Basically, they basically accept them as they are. And there doesn't seem to be a problem. And the reports that people in the audience were talking about, in their systems, they found basically the same thing. That it's more of a concern among the adults than it is among the youth.
Well, I think it's
Some very early. Three, four, five, kindergarten, first grade, second grade, kids who say, "I don't want to be a girl, I want to be a boy," or "I don't want to be a boy, I want to be a girl." And it was quite eye-opening for me, and has led me into some different directions individually, so I enjoyed it.
Good, good. No, I think it's wonderful when a community will put the social-emotional health and safety of children above all else, and come together even with controversial topics, difficult topics. The best interest of the child should always take precedence, and it sounds like that's what that community came to, which is great.
Yes.
Thank you. Elaine?
Sure. Thank you. It was my first time at the conference. I thought it was great. I thought there was a great energy, having all of these people at this conference dedicated to public education and to improving the student experience. A major theme that I found as I went to different sessions throughout the week was emotional intelligence, social-emotional learning, mental health, physical health. It's kind of these, what we might think of as foundational needs that are sort of -- sometimes we think of as separate from the academic disciplines of school, but are really just as important, and I took a few notes on them. Yeah, I went to sessions on -- from SEL for MAs, heard case studies from Melrose, Mark Brackett from the Yale University Center for Emotional Intelligence, like Google him. He didn't have any handouts or anything, but he was amazing. Like, his talk was awesome. And even the session on the Massachusetts-tiered system of support from DESI focused on these types of issues. And as a school committee member, what I took out of it the most was that unless these mental, emotional, social needs are met, the academic disciplines that we're trying to teach just won't stick, that kids cannot focus, they can't learn, they can't absorb, they can't retain until this foundational layer is met. So, I don't know, as I'm thinking about how we allocate resources and the budget season coming up, I'm thinking about these things, about how do we get the best return on our investment? And how do we make sure that not just we're putting things in front of kids, but how is it actually being absorbed? And I thought they did a really good job at the conference talking about that.
Thank you. I'm gonna piggyback a bit on Elaine, and I think that what Steve was talking about also relates to social-emotional learning and student health. And I went to several, but there were three that really stood out for me. One was from the Melrose Public Schools has a program of personalized learning. And I think this is something that is quite prevalent in other states, and they are the only community in Massachusetts to follow this program. And personalized learning results from decisions about teaching and learning based on a framework of social-emotional learning, clear learning progressions, and expectations for competency, and principles of universal design for learning. The foundational concepts come to life through student-centered approaches. The teachers choose, and the flexibility of the learning environment that promotes student agency and engagement. And so this has been a few years in Melrose, and they're moving it up. And I think they're at the high school point. And it's just interesting to see the evolution of this. And they have K-12 habits of learning, self-directed and lifelong learning, problem-solving, responsible citizenship, and communication. And I think that this is getting buy-in for this, so that it's a K-12 approach is very impressive. And there are bumps in the road, but I see a real commitment in what was presented about that. The second one that stood out for me is one called Leading Together: Strengthening Relational Trust in Schools. And the Northeast Center for Courage and Renewal, I think it's either at Leslie or Wellesley, but they are focused on having healthy adult relationships within the school, and it's like social-emotional learning for adults. And they, you know, in often, in my career, there's been like a stereotypical, a stereotype relationship between administration and staff. And this seeks to transcend that by really developing trust. And according to them, the key aspects of relational trust are respect, competence, personal regard, and integrity. And they have a series of workshops that go into schools and work with teachers. And I actually saw this program in Concord. There was a school where there were some issues with school culture and climate, and they did some good work, and they had good teacher buy-in from that. And then the last one that really stood out for me was a presentation by the Framingham Public Schools. They have a superintendent that's been there about a year, and the name of the presentation was Measuring and Improving Student Engagement in School Climate. And Framingham partners with a group called Panorama. And they create surveys for students and for teachers, but the focus is on student engagement, how they relate to the school setting, what they feel about the teachers that they work with. And they use data from those surveys to look at trends in how students are feeling about school and their level of engagement, and then they correlate it to achievement data. It was absolutely fascinating. And Framingham, I think, is in the early stages of using it. But I think the themes are really moving the focus from teacher-centered to student-centered, and taking cues, and getting a sense of how students best learn. And it's a dance, really, but it's good to see that there are school systems out there doing those things. And there are a lot of things that we see here that show that we're also involved in improving social-emotional learning and student engagement. So that's what I was telling Brooke that. This is the third year I went, and the longer you go, you see there's some redundancy. So it was good to go and see something different like this in these takeaways. So, sorry to go on so long. Okay? Colin, your turn.
All right. So for FUDX, starting off, as Neshova's fall sports came to a close, many of the sports teams had very successful seasons, some notable accomplishments. The girls' field hockey team had an undefeated season all the way up until their championship, state championship match against Somerset Berkeley, where they lost 2 to 1, unfortunately. As most of you probably know, the varsity football team completed their season with just one loss, but ended up defeating Dayton over 31 to 0 in the Division IV State Championship. They had their full Bolton Police and Fire escort on their way back to the high school, where they were greeted by many of their excited fans. Neshova also won the Thanksgiving Day football game against Clinton 21 to 0. And winter sports tryouts were held two weeks ago, and practices and games are fully underway. For arts, Neshova Drama's production of A Christmas Carol was a big success. Every show had a great turnout, and the actors surely put their audiences in the Christmas spirit. Now that the fall play is over, and the spring musical was announced at the last show, auditions for Mary Poppins are coming up this Sunday and Monday, and everyone is very excited for this upcoming show. Next Friday is the Holiday Pops concert, where Neshova bands and choirs will perform their most recent pieces. A group of music students will also be taking a trip to the Boston Pops in Boston in the near future. And the Neshova Symphonic Band will be performing at the Solomon Pond Mall tomorrow at 7 o'clock. For events, the Neshova's pep rally was held just before Thanksgiving break, where the different classes competed in friendly games. The senior sports captains and music members were recognized, and the cheer team performed one of their competition routines. The lip dub, which was also recorded that day, appears tomorrow. Neshova's EMTs held a CPR instructional event at the championship football game, where they spent about a minute teaching anybody who wanted to learn how to do CPR, they would teach them the proper procedure. And finally, the DECA season is in full swings, in full swing, as members have been working on projects for a while, and will present their projects tomorrow to parent judges at the mock competition. They will receive feedback that they can put towards their project to perfect them as best they can for their state competition coming up in January.
Super wow. What's going on? Any questions for Colin? Thank you so much. Okay, so now we have the superintendent's report. Tom?
Great. Thank you. Good evening. So I'm gonna piggyback a little bit on what Colin had to say in terms of some of the accolades going into the high school. So first of all, number one, the Super Bowl at Gillette Stadium last Friday night. Congratulations to the Neshova Regional High School Football Team as they return victorious to Bolton on Friday night after playing a tremendous game at Gillette Stadium and winning the state championship. It was an incredible evening for everyone in attendance. There are so many who deserve a note of thanks, it's difficult to know where to start. Thanks to the players, our coaches, cheerleaders, fans, musicians, parents, staff, and administration, and especially our athletic director, Tanya Rich, for all of her efforts. Special note of thanks to all of our safety partners who organized a parade of lights and sirens to help celebrate the team's accomplishment on the way back to the high school on Friday night. On a side note, we did make Friday the end of the district. We did host a spirit day, although we celebrated the football team and their accomplishments. The spirit was intended and did, it ran so much deeper. We continue to celebrate all the tremendous things that our students and staff accomplish here in Neshova, and our pride runs deep in the Neshova Regional School District and all that we do. So congratulations there. Second update is on the website. So work continues as we move forward with that. I think in my last update, we had just kind of finished up cleaning up our old website, and I think I had mentioned we've cleaned up at this point and deleted up to 1,200 pages of information on the webpage. And that's across all six schools, as well as the district page. We are now sending our mockups and information over to School Messenger. They have recently sent back mockups of each school website to each principal, as well as the district site, so we can have a look at it and what it is looking like. And we'll have about three rounds of that before we head off to holiday break. And the goal is to roll out the new district and school website webpages after the new year. So that work is coming along, and we're pretty excited about it.
So are we.
Yes. In terms of professional development, this Friday marks our second early release day, December 7th. That work continues in the area, really in the theme of engaging and empowering all learners. It coincides with George Karros's book that the district has been reading. Will culminate in his visit in March. So a lot of our teachers are working on that and developing a lot of autonomous curriculum plans to empower their own learners in their classroom. The professional development session earlier in the year in October focused on an interactive notebook that kind of guided our teachers to help them focus on projects that they want to empower their own learners with. And Friday's work, this Friday's work, will continue with that. That's where we're at with professional development. The next one was our vaping parent sessions. We held three community sessions on vaping on November 14th, November 15th, and November 19th, one within each community. Our special thanks go to our Health and Wellness Coordinator for the district, Lisa Goldbicky, and Tina Grisowski, who is the Massachusetts Project Coordinator of Central Mass Tobacco-Free Community Partnership at the Department of Psychiatry and University of Massachusetts Medical School, for their efforts. Also to our administrators, who also attended. These sessions were informative. They also presented the actual vaping paraphernalia and displayed that to inform parents and community members on what that actually looks like. The underlying premise for these sessions was to focus on the marketing component of the industry as it relates to youth, as its target audience, health implications, and risks of vaping. A total of 33 parents attended these sessions, and thanks to everybody who was involved in that.
So I think that this was an incredible undertaking to provide information to parents. I guess I'm a little surprised at the turnout. And understandably, you know, there's busyness, but I'm just wondering about the, and I don't think I can answer this, about what I would consider to be a little turnout across the district. And was this, were the sessions recorded in any way so that people might see them?
I don't believe they were recorded. I know there, we are working on having a follow-up session later in the year. And talking with Claire Clancy and Lisa Goldbicky, you know, the premise was, hey, if we get 10 parents out, if we get 20 parents out.
Yeah, no, I get it.
Hopefully that message can continue to multiply, and we'll get more people out there the next time, and continue to showcase some of that work.
Yeah, no, just keep at it, because it's an important thing for parents to know and understand. I mean, what, 10 years ago, we were teaching parents how to use, it was before Facebook, what was that site? MySpace?
MySpace.
Yeah, right, so.
Right.
Anyway, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Keep going.
The next one just is an update on the staff crisis handbook and the flip charts that we continue to make revisions on. That's kind of an offshoot of some of the Alice emergency training that we had earlier in the year. The final revisions of those flip charts have been made, and the handbook will be published shortly, which means that those will go out to teachers and classrooms across the district, and there will be a consistent emergency crisis plan in every classroom. That, the work continues in that area for safety for all district-wide. The next one, Superintendent Clancy continues to represent Neshova on the Assavitt Valley Collaborative Executive Board. The work that this group does continues to support ongoing professional development for all member districts. That's a meeting that she attends monthly in the Assavitt Valley Collaborative, as well as ongoing growth and development in terms of programming and support for our special needs population. Again, chiming in on what Colin reported out earlier, the Neshova Regional High School Play. Congratulations to everyone involved in the recently performed drama production of Charles Dickens's A Christmas Carol at the high school. It was an incredibly professional presentation. The performance, costume, set, direction, and production were spectacular. It was a tremendous event. And finally, congratulations to our cheerleading squad for their recent efforts, as well as the national all-state championship meet at Worcester State University. Their final performance in competition was outstanding, great energy, and a great routine by our squad.
Super. Okay.
That is the report.
Thanks so much.
You're welcome.
Super. Okay, moving on to new business, we have the DECA donation acceptance part. Thanks, Colin.
So I have in front of me a letter from Stavros Androplis. He is the DECA advisor at the high school, and he has received a very generous donation from a company called Affordable Interior Systems, also known as AIS. And in the amount of $2,000, and in his letter, I'll just read you the highlights. The membership numbers have increased from 20 members in 2010 to over 157 members this year. Big program. And last year, our school qualified 95 kids to the state competition in Boston, and 50 students qualified for the national competition in Atlanta, Georgia. And with increasing numbers of returning members, additional accolades are sure to follow this year. However, due to the increase in membership and tightening of the budget, increased costs, this donation is particularly needed this year and much appreciated. So I would like to have your approval of this donation.
Okay, can we have a motion to accept the donation?
Sure.
Steve, second, please.
Second.
Please. Any questions, discussion? Okay, all in favor of accepting the donation in the amount of $2,000 from AIS? Okay, Elaine, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, you gonna stay there?
I'm just gonna stay here.
Okay, and we're looking now at the preliminary FY2 budget.
Yes. So you had before you a budget that, at this point, has not been subject to any cuts. This is basically what we have at this point in the process. And it's a 7.45% increase. And each one of these lines are summarized. If anybody has any questions on any particular line, I'd be more than happy to answer them. Questions?
I have a process question. So what, this is my first time doing this. So what is the process from here? Does it go back to budget and warrant?
Go ahead, Pat.
So basically, at this point, we've collected all of the information from all the different departments in the schools. And Brooke and myself will go over every single line of the budget submitted to us, and question, and, you know, remove, increase, you know, evaluate everything, and see what things need to have changes. Included in here are numbers that are purely estimates as well, because I don't have state numbers yet. So that's why I just, you know, to caution, this number looks high, but there are a lot of things that, you know, we have to review and change, and make some decisions on what's appropriate to put forward to the communities for their assessment, for your final approval.
So what happens typically is that Pat comes back weekly, and these numbers change. The budget workshop on January 26th, we receive a very comprehensive budget book, and different departments and schools come in, and we go through their requests. And so we become part of that process. So there's a lot of work that still needs to be done. I think what Budget and Warrant does from this point on is that they look at different cost centers. Is that, can you talk about the process, where their involvement is?
And every time that we bring forward a rendition of this budget, the Budget and Warrant Subcommittee will look at it and discuss, and perhaps bring to you, you know, any information that is pertinent for your discussion.
And just so folks know, we go line by line. These have subcategories, and in the time that I've been on this committee, we really do a deep dive, and we, Pat can attest to the fact, we ask a lot of questions. And so the, I can't remember what our initial percentage increase was last year. Do you call?
6.99%.
And then at the final iteration, it was 3.94, I think.
I believe so.
Yeah, no, that's overall, and then it translates a little bit differently for each of the towns. So we have a long way to go, a lot of work to do, and we do give it a great deal of scrutiny. Any other questions?
So, Pat, a couple of questions. First, is there an upper limit to the increase in the budget from year to year? In other words, is there a ceiling that we can't, threshold that we can't pass?
Nothing.
There is no limit? Okay. And then the other question?
Let me just qualify that. Brooke reaches out to the communities and discusses what the financial situation is in each community, and we have a pretty good idea of, you know, what the communities can afford, as, you know, as far as pushing their tax levy amounts too high, where they, you know, we wouldn't want any community to have to go into a 2.5% override, proposition 2.5 override. So those discussions are also happening. And did you have something you wanted?
Yeah, I'll just finish with Mike. I just had a, I didn't want to
So that's also something, when she and I go through this budget, we really go through it and look at things like, really, we can't do that this year, maybe it's something we'll do next year. And then we bring it forward to the school committee for the budget workshop.
Is there a limit to how much we can request from the towns in increased contribution from the towns?
Well, the contribution by each town is based on enrollment, and it's, there's an entire formula. You have to look at the document. We have a five-year rolling enrollment, so that it isn't, you know, like if we had a spike, it kind of levels it out over a five-year period. So we basically pay according to your enrollment in the district. And there's also some other factors, one being the minimum local contribution expected from each community, and that's based on a wealth factor. So that could be very different for each community.
And that's determined by the state of Massachusetts, correct?
That's by the state of Massachusetts. And it comes out with the, what they call the H1, the House 1 numbers. That's the number, we have to wait really until January to get the preliminary numbers, and then we don't actually get the final And then we don't actually get the final numbers on those until July, July 1st or July in some cases. So it is based on enrollment and the minimum local contribution.
Yeah? Yeah.
Other questions?
Sorry.
Go ahead.
One follow-up question.
Yep.
The requests are, I'm sorry if you already covered this, the requests are based on projections?
Some are. Like, an example would be our child school assessment, our school choice assessment, SPED assessment, those are all estimates. In some cases, we've had to estimate some costs in different areas. One of the things about our budget process, especially when it relates to facilities and to special ed, sometimes we don't have those final numbers this early in the year. So we really need to look at that a little bit closer. And as we get closer to that time, we're going to go through the budget workshop, we'll have better understanding of what those numbers actually are. And a lot of times that comes down.
Other questions for Pat?
I have a question. On the very first line, salaries for existing personnel. I would expect to see some increase based on the contract.
Yes.
But this looks like more than what I would have expected.
Right.
Is there something else in there?
Also included in that, and this is just so that it's consistent across that line, is any request for additional personnel. So included in that line is contractual obligations and any request for additional personnel.
Okay, so the second line there is basically no longer in use?
We're not using.
Okay.
Other questions for Pat?
I had a question. The transportation contracts, how much of our busing is contracted in advance? What are those, what's the term for those contracts?
For the regular education, it's three years.
Three years, okay.
Right, and for the special ed education, we use the collaborative to get a reduced rate. And that's an annual contract that we sign with them.
Okay.
As a member of the collaborative.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? And I wanted to ask about, we had sort of a surprise expense last year. Was it the high school, was it a leach field? I'm sorry, I can't remember, involved?
The leach field is included.
And whereabouts is that?
And that would be in the facilities department, non-salary. If you look all the way across, you can see that there's an increase of 562.5.
Yes.
$250,000 of that is the leach field.
Okay. Last year, we fronted $50,000 for that in last year's budget, is that correct?
In this year's budget, they're in.
Right, I'm sorry. Yes, yes, yes. And we had sort of hoped to sort of stagger it so it wouldn't hit one fiscal year all at once?
For this purpose, I put the full amount in. If we were to decide to go before the towns to ask to finance this over three, five years, then it would be a lower number, not the full 250.
So will there be a scenario for that? Because we're looking at 7.45 increase.
Right.
So would you?
Yes, they would.
Create, so maybe the same document, but with that line item sort of broken out, unpacked a little bit so we could see what the possibilities are?
Right. I can do that.
Okay. That'd be great. Because that's like a one-time cost. It's not like a...
Exactly.
It's an expense, but it's not a driver that we roll over every year?
Sure.
Okay. Okay, any other questions for Pat? Okay, thank you. Okay, the next item of new business is the draft school committee manual. So if you would look at the sheet that shows the recommended changes to the school committee manual, and we'll go through those. Before we begin, I want to thank Elaine and Mike, who serve on the personnel subcommittee with me, who really did a great job of looking at the document and having fantastic insight into what would make sense to really serve the membership, especially new members. And also, they have a keen eye for typos and romantic problems and all that stuff, and it was greatly appreciated. So thank you for that. And we'll continue every year to look at it and update it as needed. So just in general, if you look at that, and things are identified by page, so we added to the information about the new school committee orientation. And if you go to the document itself, anything we've added is in blue ink. Brooke is adding something about the budget, the role of the budget planning on page nine. On page 11 and 12, we have school committee protocols, but we haven't reviewed those. They're the ones that we developed two years ago. And so at some point, we need to review them and revise as needed. And that is something that I can talk to Lorraine about to put on a future agenda for this year. Moving forward, however, it would make sense to look at those protocols at our workshop in June, so we hit the ground running with our updated protocols. Communication has not changed. We will wait for the recommendations from the communications subcommittee before we change that. On pages 15 and 17, we have descriptions of all of the subcommittees, advisories, and liaisons, and that we have highlighted the ones that are inactive for this school year. There were some text additions to the pages on school committee meetings. Again, with the school committee agenda, there are additions and a link to the sample planning calendar. The planning calendar, I think especially for new members, gives them an idea of what our direction is for the year. There are things that we have to address every year, and then there are things that get added as we go along. At the end of each meeting, Lorraine always asks for agenda items, future agenda items. So we have a sample agenda, it's been annotated. The public participation at school meetings, we've added a link so you can see the district policy. And then we've added to the appendix, and these pages are wrong, I'm sorry. The appendix is page 21. But we have links to the school...
CAFs.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Those are right.
I'm sorry?
Those are right.
You fixed it?
Those are right.
Those are right?
Yeah, when Brooke added her section, I pushed everything down.
Oh, okay. Okay, thanks.
So I went through and fixed everything.
You're the best, I'm telling you. Okay.
So it's fixed.
So we have links to the school committee meeting calendars and school calendars. We had the revised organizational chart. And we will be developing, the PSC will work on developing a school committee member FAQ along with a glossary that will help us understand what we're all doing. So action items include talking about the school committee self-evaluation, which is policy BAA. So we had some questions about when this is conducted, so that will have to come back to the school committee. We're adding a glossary and a list of acronyms, the PSC will do that. Brooke will be adding a list of departments and their functions for the appendix. Alita added the sample planning calendar, a link to that. Again, the operating protocols will need to be reviewed for this year, and it'll be something moving forward that we do every June. And then publishing tentative dates of additional meetings. When you sign up for school committee, you know about the regular business meetings. We have a calendar. And then we find out there are other meetings. There's Fritown, there's budget workshop. At budget season, sometimes we have to add meetings. So we're going to work on putting that into the calendar, either tentative dates or give folks what the dates were the previous year because they tend to fall around the same time. So that, again, thanks to Mike and to Elaine for bringing this awareness to light, it's greatly appreciated. So with that, I don't know if anybody has any questions or, yes, who's?
I have one quick question.
Yes.
If Lynn were here, I feel like she would ask if, I know in the policy subcommittee meetings, she's been asking, or she's been very concerned about if there's something in the school committee manual that's also in a policy and it currently matches, if one or the other is changed, that there be sort of some way of cross...
I think we addressed that.
You did, okay.
Well, let me double check. We talked about it for a second. Let me see if we added it to...
Just she, I think hers was more of a disclaimer, like that the policy manual would trump any policy that's laid out in the school committee manual?
Yes.
And I think that that might be...
So it probably could have greater clarity under the descriptions of subcommittees. Prior to new school year, revise school committee manual and present as recommendations to, I just wanted to put a note to clarify re-policy updates. It would be, it's the role of the PSC to review the manual, and I think part of that would be taking any updates from policy and putting them into the manual. I just, I want to add it to this, the description of what the personnel subcommittee does, just for clarity.
So I noticed you do have, you refer to those policies, so it'll be your responsibility then to...
To update them. But we should get a list from or be aware of what policies have been changed from the, you know, just communication between policy and personnel with what we need to update. But I want to hardwire it into this.
Sure.
So I don't forget.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great. Thank you for adding that. I know Lynn had spoken about it in there. Other questions? Did folks have an opportunity? I know it came to the packet late. If folks want to take more time to look it over and I don't know if folks feel that they are ready to approve it for this year with the addition that I mentioned? What are the thoughts around the table?
I think it came out a little bit late and we're missing a couple members as well, so maybe hold off until our next meeting, so if there's time.
Okay. So could we put it on the 19th meeting? Okay, thank you. Okay. Great, there we go. So let's see. Okay, we have a Noshova Regional Education Association memorandum of agreement. Elaine? It's memorandum of...
Same.
Amendment.
Same.
Well, it says, never mind, just...
Listen, thank you for allowing us to present your consideration of memorandum of agreement, understanding in the packet with several slight changes to our educator evaluation protocol. Kevin Keveney, president of the association and principals, Laura Friend and Ross McCarren from the administration are here representing the educator evaluation committee, which also has eight or 10, I would say, other teachers as members as well. The committee met during the last school year to develop recommendations for changes to the educator evaluation protocol and its timelines. The result is the MOA that's in your packet and up on the screen. The MOA was ratified by the association membership on November 13th, and we're going to ask you to be ratifying it if that you wish tonight. There are three changes within the MOA, you can just, at the bottom of the first page there. Two apply to professional status teachers, that teaches, teachers who have served at least three full years, and the third applies to teachers who don't have professional teacher status, that is, teachers who are within their first three years. The two for the professional status teachers, need to back up a minute, tell that there are two kinds of observations. There are unannounced, what we call mini-observations, and then there are announced formal observations. So for the professionally status teachers, there's one change for each. The change, the first proposed change is the mini-observations. For both of our professionally status teachers, they're on a two-year directed growth, a self-directed growth plan, there'll be a minimum of four and a maximum of eight of those many unannounced observations over the two-year cycle. Since this will, if, it's your pleasure to ratify tonight if this goes into effect, this will be like a transition year because we'll be working our way into the new protocol. There's something in the agreement that makes for a clean transition so that those who are in year two, the professionally status teachers who are in year two of their self-directed growth plan, will have a minimum of one and a maximum of two of these mini-observations this year, even if that puts them outside of the four-to-eight parameter. The second proposed change for the professionally status teachers is, again, for those on self-directed growth plans, the announced formal observation will only happen over the course of the two years at the request of either the educator or at the request of the evaluator. Otherwise, it won't happen. Last change is on the next page, it's on the non-professionally status teachers, it's a deadline change of the formative assessment. The deadline is going to move from just two weeks, from January 15th to February 1st. And then there's language in there that in this transition year, ones that happen, because we weren't sure the limits would be ratified, ones that happen between January 15th and February 1st will not be considered tardy. So those are the proposed changes. My learned colleagues will stand for questions if there are any, and then we would love to ask you to ratify this document for us.
Any questions? Mike?
So just a quick question on the second proposed change. If I remember correctly, it was an announced observation will only happen at the request of the educator, is that right?
Or the evaluator. That's right.
Or the evaluator. So under what circumstances might an educator request an observation? I mean, I guess I'm just thinking from my point of view.
Yeah, I would argue if they have any concerns, if they are doing something that they'd like to show and have it codified in their evaluation, you know, it helps with their standing, it's something for them to fall back on. And usually, if they're proud of something, they like to share it and keep a record of it.
Great, thanks.
Other questions?
I have just a quick question. For the first change, what is it currently?
Right now, it's a minimum of five, but no maximum, over the two-year cycle.
Can you talk about the process that you went through to get to this point in the agreement?
Well, it's quarter seven now. It's a very large committee, and we met many times and discussed not only this, but a lot of things. And we discussed kind of the questions that you had, you know, what's fair, what's the best way for the educator to be able to meet the goals of the EDAV, which is continuous improvement, you know? Do we spend a lot of time talking about, do we need that formal announced observation for someone who's a professionally status teacher and has been doing well for many of the year? Talk, talk, talk.
If I could add, the process began in 2013 where we decided as a district to adapt. We spent a lot of time, we spent that full summer working on the rubric. And it's just an ongoing committee that meets, and as we put it into practice, we're looking at what works, what doesn't work, how do we improve it, how do we streamline the process? Because it is a huge undertaking, and I will say this for both parties, and to be honest, I believe that the administration has the heavier burden, bigger burden in the process. So, you know, that said, you know, where there are opportunities where things are going well in the evaluation, we allow that to happen, and where there are concerns, they can be addressed, hopefully effectively through the tool that we've developed.
And the teachers have ratified this already, so they're in...
We have ratified, yes. By a large margin, yes.
Any other questions, comments? Can we have a motion to ratify the memorandum of agreement with the changes to the evaluation system?
So moved.
Any questions, discussion? Second, Elise? All in favor? Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
All right then, so... Hey, Tom. School lunch. One of my favorite subjects.
Mine too.
For those of you who are new and haven't been here sitting at the stadium quite as long as I, I really do love talking about school nutrition. But tonight, we're on a subject where we're looking to increase our costs of meals at the high school and middle schools. The reason we're doing that is because there's a difference in size of portions and every year, we strive to continually grow our, the products, not grow, but improve the products that we use. By doing so, we've hit the point now where, it's been six years since we've had our last increase, and unfortunately, we're at the point now where we are going to need it. Our first slide shows some of the surrounding area towns and the prices that they've gone with for this school year. We have, well, you can see them, there's really no need to go over them. And that was the information we used to come up with our new pricing for Nishoba Regional. What we're looking for is to move to a $3.30 price for the cost of the high school meals and then a $3.25 cost for the middle school. And that will hopefully gain us an amount of about $27.5 to reinvest into our program and to meet the contractual obligations that we have, the yearly costs increases for provisions and supplies. We're facing something very new this year, going into next year's budget with the recent tariffs that have been placed on other countries, and that really affects our supplies, not our groceries or not our, but our actual supplies, the items that we use to serve lunch on and with. And then working to fully absorb all related departmental costs. So those are the reasons we're asking for this increase.
Okay. Anything else?
No, that's all I have tonight.
Okay. Any questions for Tom?
Yes.
Yes.
How does this affect kids that are on reduced lunch or free lunch programs?
It doesn't at all. That's a great question. Yeah. These will only affect our paid and will not have any effect on the reimbursable meals that we serve.
Mike?
I'm wondering how, since our last increase was six years ago, how were we able to accommodate the contractual obligations and staffing costs that we're looking at this year, that 2% rise? So how were we able to keep it?
In the past, well, instead of going up nickels and dimes, we went up 25 cents over at the last increase. So we went from $2.75 to $3, and that held us off for six years. Now we're looking at 30 cents to, again, hopefully hold us off a few years.
Okay.
Anybody else? Come on, it's my favorite subject.
That's my job.
Yeah, is there a reason why there's no proposed increase for elementary school?
Well, their portion sizes are a bit smaller and if you see on our second slide, most area towns between $2.75 and $3. So we'd like to keep that in the same general area. And again, with the smaller portion sizes and mandates that we have to follow, it doesn't really warrant that increase at this time.
No, I appreciate the fact that that was taken into account and unless you're there and you see the differences in what the portion size look like. So, you know, we don't want the elementary kids to be subsidizing the lunch of the older kids who eat so much more than them. So thank you for this thoughtful presentation and the explanation. Any other questions, comments for Tom? So do we need to make a motion to approve the increases in the lunch?
Yes.
Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I move that we approve the requested increase for middle school and high school lunches.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions or comments? Okay. All those in favor? Okay. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, folks. We show a happy holiday season.
Same to you.
Look forward to seeing you again soon. Thanks, Tom.
So now we go from lunch to extended learning. Hi, Raina.
You know, I have my basket of giveaways.
Oh, wow.
And I say that because you all haven't taken the button yet. So for those of you who haven't gotten your button, it's free. It says extended learning rocks and I really feel that way. So thank you for inviting me back to explore some of the cost rationale and I am thinking that it will be, it will highlight for you how we got to where we are. So in terms of all going to work, thank you. Our cost increase rationale for tuition is based on two key reasons. One being that we have a 2% salary COLA plus benefit increase, that's straightforward. And another reason that I think is really significant is that we have experienced an increase in the kindergarten population and these little kindergartners do require more supervision, which therefore means more staff. Just to give you a picture, kindergartners today represent 25% of our total students in our program. This year, we had a 24% increase in kindergartens over last year, which kind of astounded me. And just to give you an example, Stowe, which is our biggest site, we have a total of 89 students in the PM program. We have an AM and a PM program. And in the PM program, there are 30 kindergartners. That's one-third. And the reason why it's important to recognize that staffing issue is that we, our program does not live in a self-contained room. It's big and it's spread out and that's a good thing because that really promotes creative choices, which also supports our social emotional learning. We give our children choices. So, but if five children have to go to the restroom, the staff has to accompany them and it's really a safety issue. So I shared that with you because I was pretty astounded when we looked at the different numbers. If we go to the next slide, I was very curious, let's see, is that our next slide? No, I want to keep going to comparative data. I'm sorry, can you keep? There we go. That's the slide I like. I was very curious, much like Tom was, with looking at the surrounding towns, what our tuition rates look like. So we selected six different towns. As you can see on the top, Hudson is the lowest. They are a program that is sanctioned under protocol CHAPS, C-H-A-P-S. They are not part of the school district, nor they're part of the rec department. They have the lowest of the seven programs. And having said that, the registration fee happens to be a little higher, but it's at $75. We fall really almost in the middle, smack dab. Our AM program is the second lowest of all of the surrounding towns. Our PM program is fourth lowest, or fourth highest, however you want to look at it, because we're right in the middle. Our registration fee of $35 is really kind of a split. I want to point out that Concord-Kyle, and this sort of supports my, the rationale of the kindergarten aspect, they actually charge more for their kindergarten program, $760 a month versus $598. That speaks to what we're talking about, about caring for these kids in a different manner. So that, I think, was useful for me to take a look at. The last time we increased was 2016. And I wanted to share some information on our enrichment program. So if we go to the slide, fall/winter, this is where we are right now. And this was a question, I believe, I think, Elise, you had brought this up to kind of understand and also you yourself, Kathy, to sort of better understand, how does enrichment fit into this equation? Our programs are quite modestly priced, actually, they're very modestly priced, and we put our any projected cost back into the program. I just lined up for you what we've actually delivered this year. There's one, the music programs will continue because they're 10 weeks long. And really, the premise is to offer creative choices to our children. And in my eyes, as a former teacher, well, I'm still a teacher, but as a teacher, really, I look at this program as giving our students an opportunity to be creative, be curious, and safe, of course, and try different things. It's that whole emotional learning piece that I'm very, very proud of. So I share that with you because the number of programs we pick and the kinds of programs really are speaking to that creativity that we want to have flourish. So our total projected revenue for this particular season is $25,000 and change. Our projected costs are $22,136 with a differential of close to $3,000, which is, I said, goes back into the program. We have a few families who cannot afford the price that we charge, even though we keep competitive, that subsidizes it as well. If we go into the next program season, which is winter/spring, it'll probably be the next slide. There we go, winter/spring, thank you. These are projected because we haven't actually rolled the programs out, but I based it on past participation. And we have five new programs. I'm just going to quickly mention them. The STEM K2 is a new program I'm excited about. Martial Arts, new program. We need to let those kids get some energy out, right? As long as they don't kick, they kick the boards. We have that as part of the price point. We have a STEM cool circuit program for sixth to eighth graders, new program, again, middle school focus. Yoga, we actually offered it this year and it has been going really well with the sixth to eighth graders. So we're going to offer it again. They just, they say namaste all the time, which means, you see the light, you see the light, you. And Puzzle Mania, I think, could be very cool for our third to fifth graders. I'm kind of putting it, excuse me, yeah, third to fifth graders, I'm keeping it a little bit more narrow because of what's involved with the hand coordination and whatnot. So our projected revenue for these programs is $19,500. Our cost for this program, we're going to be putting $2,760 back into the program. Again, this is not a money-making scheme whatsoever. We are, you know, providing excellent enrichment programs, but then also covering our costs. If you turn to the tuition percent increase, which I'm not sure what slide that is, and I apologize if these were slightly out of order, but there we go. Yes, there we are. And of course, I had to show my little, a picture of my friends who are all making gingerbread houses because they are so, so, so cute. We have, our anticipated tuition revenue this year is $750,000 with a 2% increase that would put us at $765 and then thereafter, 2.5, $768, 3%, $772. Yes? Do you want to add? No? Okay. I just wanted to go to the next. What's that? I wanted to just move to the next slide. Oh, okay. And this is the next slide that I didn't have on my sheet, so shame on me. But nonetheless, here we go. Everyone can see it, so it's not a surprise to anybody. So if we're looking at it going across the board, and I think, you know, I believe we had recommended a 3% increase, so we'll just stay with that as the, at the far end. We're talking about $772.5 for 3%. Our Richmond Academies, which are fee-based, $75, bringing us to a total of $847, $500. So that's, the last three bars are your 2, 2 and 1/2 and 3% increases that we're anticipating a approval of one of the three. I just want to emphasize what our overall goal is. It should be our last slide and I think I'm up to two minutes now, but I'll try to get close to it.
We're doing really good, so take your time.
I'm conscious of that. I, we want to continue offering this program to be self-sustaining and also obviously to cover facility and benefit costs, plus providing Richmond programs that do augment our before and after-school program. And I really, you know, I share my deep passion for the social emotional learning and having our kids gain confidence trying new things in an environment that isn't confined to a specific subject. Don't get me wrong, I love subject matter, I was an English teacher, but when you see these students trying sabori weaving on your far left, a Japanese, you know, open room, they're kindergartners doing it something, it is extraordinary. When you see little kids doing, you know, I mean, chess, I mean, I don't even know how to play chess. And they're talking as if, like, they know strategy, it's problem-solving, it's fun, it's great. So I believe that our program adds a lot of value. It's not just a babysitting daycare service. I know sometimes the parents regard it as such, but my goal in being in this position is to really help our parents understand more clearly how our programs really do augment our students' learning. And that we're doing through the website. I put School Messenger out, flyers, I know, Tom, I mean, Ross thinks I put a lot of flyers out, so it's, but that's okay. And also our February camp program and our April coming up. So that concludes my presentation. I hope I've given you enough, you know, sort of understanding of how we got to where we are and how we'd like to move forward and we would like to see an increase as it's warranted.
Steve?
Can, Alida, can you go back to the slide that's titled Costs Versus Tuition Percentage Increase?
That's right.
Oh, okay. At the last meeting, we recommended, the budget warrant committee recommended a 3% increase. If we do a 3% increase, the program has a wiggle room, $15,000 for any new or any new programs that they would like to introduce. That's not a lot of money. If we go with a 2% increase, they have $7,500, which is even less. So once again, I would, I will make a motion that we go with a 3% increase.
Well, let's go around the table.
Well, you have to have a motion to have a discussion.
Well, I know that. No, you don't.
I do.
You get to the point where you make a motion. But, all right, other thoughts about the increase?
3%, 2%, or 2 and 1/2%, I mean, I understand those numbers. I don't want to undervalue that increase or, I guess, overvalue it as well. But to what extent are parents aware of this proposed increase and if it is significantly impacting them? And I get it, I mean, the biggest increase would be a five-day after-school annually of, you know, it's 3%.
I have not presented to them in a document. I think that in conversations, you know, there's always, I always approach it as, you know, our programs are very competitive and we add value. Should there be a conversation? We can certainly explore that so that parents aren't caught off guard.
Yeah, I think, if I could just step in, normally, we don't tell them in advance that we're bringing this to the school committee. The school committee does exactly what you've done, like you've gone two meetings, you had discussion last meeting, you had discussion meeting, this particular meeting. So it wouldn't be Raina's position to go out there and talk about it specifically. It would be thereafter, she might have one or the odd conversation, but she wouldn't take it out there to say, what do you think about this? This is the school committee's decision that as they look at everything that they put up last time and tonight. And then thereafter, she would go out. And the truth is, this is ample, ample time between now and next year. And so if there's somebody that needs some extra support or whatever, there's ample opportunity now to go, to make, move in and help, help with that. So I just, the reason I wanted to step in is because I wouldn't want her going out and talking about this at this point in time in advance of the school committee. It's this decision from this table first and then push it out and it's our job to implement.
And I just want to add because the waitlist is really long this year. And we've been slowly allowing some students, when parents figure out their schedules and sometimes they have a new arrangement or whatever. So I think that that was, to me, an indication that we're well-priced. And then now that I've done the comparison, the comparative study that I was glad I did, I'm like, yeah, we're in a good place. I mean, I don't think that this is going to be shocking. Quite frankly, when you look at the amount that it really is, it's kind of feels like what Tom was presenting, it's really quite small. I can give you an example of that. For a five-day program, people who attend in the afternoon, five days, a 3% increase currently, 3%, right, I mean, five days right now is $3,600 a year. For a 3% increase, it would be $3,708, it's $108 for the year. So it's really pretty small.
Excuse me, Susan, did you want to?
I just had a question about the slide that has like both the fall/winter enrichment and the winter/spring, the projected costs. I'm assuming that doesn't include salaries? That's just supplies?
Correct.
Okay. So then, when you go to the others?
We pay, I'm sorry, we pay our outside, it does include what we pay our outside resources in that regard, yes. That's what you're talking about, but not salaries.
Excuse me, Susan, did you want to?
I just had a question about the, the slide that has, like, both the fall-winter enrichment and the winter-spring. The projected costs, I'm assuming that doesn't include salaries? That's just supply?
Correct.
Okay. So then, when you go to the others?
We pay, I'm sorry, we pay our outside, it does include what we pay our outside resources in that regard, yes. That's what you're talking about, but not salaries for our staff, just like salaries that when we bring in an outside resource for Mag arena?
Yes, wizards.
Yeah.
So then, if you go back to the costs versus tuition, I guess, so there's the salary costs and then the program costs. So those program costs, is that, like, facilities? Is that what you're talking about?
Oh, and this slide?
The, the costs versus tuition?
The program costs would be facilities, contracted services, professional development that has to happen for the employees, supplies that they would use in the normal after-school program without any of the extras.
Substitutes.
Substitutes.
There are a lot of things in that, that number. And I, and I think too, I would go back to Steve's point, say there are very little wiggle room here.
Unless, unless you make choices to, to not do some of the?
Right. Right. And/or to follow along, along that line of thinking too. And/or you can't run one of these programs because you don't have the numbers. So.
So, the, the?
And then I, I just have one more question.
Yes.
And then the enrichment and academies, the fee-based thing? So that's above and beyond the tuition?
Right.
So, so the, where's the revenue? Oh, oh, is that, that's the projected revenues in this section?
Right, so in other words, if, if it costs $25 per kid to bring in, we pay a contract?
And our margins are like, I just have to take a deep breath. You know, it's like $5, you know, above, just so that we can get as many, you know, students to come in and enjoy it. We do offer free performances and shows for everybody. You know, the Spooktaculars, the Holidays, the Savori Weaving. And I think that, that again, shows our commitment to adding value.
Is there a reason that as part of this additional information, the surveys that you'd mentioned, why that data wasn't included in the?
No, that, no, it is. That's what she was talking about, connecting with other surrounding areas and finding out what their costs were. I believe that that's what she was referring to.
No, I thought that, that surveys were put out to parents.
Oh, parents.
Oh, that's totally different.
Oh, I'm sorry, so ask the question now.
So you, you had mentioned the last time you were here that you had conducted surveys, asking them what they'd be interested in for programming. And, and you just mentioned a couple of minutes ago that you're sure that some parents just would, would be happy with just a beat or a babysitting, or I'd like to call it like a safe environment at their school.
Safe environment, right.
So I wonder, you know, what that, what that data was? If you could speak to that?
So the, I did one survey, and that survey was primarily focused on, I actually did another survey at the end of this week, which I'll speak to. But the first survey was really to gain insight into whether or not middle school parents were interested in having some Richmond programs brought in because we had heard that they might. And when we got the feedback, it was about 1,500 responded, which wasn't huge, but again, it was representative of about 10%. And they did want some programs mostly STEM and relaxation or health-related. So we brought in STEM and yoga. That was that survey. The, the survey I'm going to be putting out, I've already written it, it's going to be sent out Friday, is really to your question, you know? What do you like? What don't you like? What would you like to see more of? Or not?
Right.
So that data I'm hoping we'll get, you know, usually people who respond to a survey, it's usually within the first two to three days, and then after it just drops. So I believe I'll probably have that kind of report by early, you know, mid-next week.
And one more question. And I don't know if this is for Brooke or if it's for you. So, so then, in analyzing that data, how much of a driver is that for programming? Or is there, I mean, I know there's a mission for the extended learning. Is that mission, are we committed to that mission? So what would be the purpose of that, of that feedback?
Of the survey?
Yeah, so if, if parents say that they think that, that it's, you know, there are too many opportunities and they prefer it to be scaled back?
With that input?
I can't imagine what that's going to be, but I'm just curious about the process behind it.
So I, I think that, I think it's really important. Anytime we are able to glean information from our parent community, I think it's critical to us. And I think it behooves us to utilize that information in a productive manner with our programming or whatever it is that we're doing. So we would never do a survey, and I'm not even suggesting that you're saying this, but we would never do a survey that we didn't, first of all, really want to do and want to see the information, and then take that, secondly, take that information and apply it in some form or another. I think that's what you're asking. And so, yes, we would definitely take a hard look at whatever comes in with that information, and then tweak or?
Absolutely.
That's kind of how we do business anyway.
So I know that Steve already moved to, to do the 3% increase, but in my mind, until we have that feedback from the customers of the program, I think it may be a little premature to decide about rates if, if there will be a bit of, not an overhaul, but if there'll be tweaks to programming that might adjust the, the costs.
Can I go for something? And I know what you're saying. And, and Raina, this is, you've done an incredible job with this program. And asking for this data in this way, please do not construe it as doubting the value of this program because I am, I am blown away by what you have accomplished in the short period of time that you have been here. That being said, this is the first year. It's new data. I would expect to see that data used to inform decisions about next year. We don't have any data to look at right now, except that we have, we know that the projected costs exceed the projected revenues if we don't do anything. And so I agree with Steve that when you look at an increase and you have a difference of about $15,000, you don't know what event, that's a thin margin anyway. And I would imagine if you continue with the surveys, you get your baseline data and then you move forward, part of the presentation, when you report to us, will be your survey data in addition to everything else. So Elaine, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I actually had a question for Pat. So the tuition that comes in will go into a revolving fund, right?
It goes into a revolving fund.
So at the end of the year, if we voted an increase, and then at the end of the year, there's excess money in that account, we'll know, right? That we have, we didn't necessarily need, need that money and we could adjust it for next year? So we can sort of?
We want to be cautious about, I want to be cautious about the notion of needing. I mean, if we didn't feel that we needed it right now, we wouldn't come to you. The only way that there would be any additional monies is if something else had it. Again, Kathy's point, this is such a thin margin. So there's not a lot to play with there. But, you know, other, other things have, like I say, some pro, this is the best projection we can put forward at this point in time. And kind of gets back to Mike's point earlier. You know, we set this up in a manner so that all of our parents know, hopefully by Christmas or January. January, I think, is when we're doing the tuition of the athletic fees. But if you take a look, you can see everything lining up so that parents know exactly, well, well, in advance of next year, of exactly, and they can make some choices around that, whether it's with sports or how many sports they want their kids to go into, or whether it's K or pre-K or whatever, you know? So this kind of follows along that line. So the, the only reason I kind of jumped on that a little bit was just because of the word "need." Right now, and it gets to Kathy's point, we know that we need this right now as we look forward and project where we're at. But you also bring up a really good point in that if there's a big pot of money, which we are not anticipating, but if there was, then you could look and say, okay, going back to like the Tom Poole thing with a, we don't have to do an increase for the next couple of years, you know? Now, keep in mind, so last year, I, I think I can go on record, and Pat, help me if I'm, if I'm wrong, but last year, we didn't increase K, we didn't increase pre-K, we didn't increase our meals. So, you know, there are some programs where we've, we've stayed the course. But I think this year, for this particular program, I certainly feel strongly that we need to move forward with that.
Yeah, and I mean to suggest that we spend wildly on all this extra money.
No, I didn't even know. I know you all enough to know that that would not be your style.
But you did have revolving accounts with extraordinary amounts of money left over. And I don't see that this is going to happen.
No, no, I, I am confident that you're giving us the best projections. I just mean that when you're budgeting, in my opinion, it's better to have a little bit left over than not have enough.
Exactly.
Right, I, I totally see that. I completely agree with you.
Something that, I'm probably going to throw a monkey wrench in here, but it's transparent, full disclosure, is that it got me to thinking about the kindergarten piece quite a bit. Because if the trend, and I don't have data on why this is a trend, but it appears to be a trend that more, well, I have a theory about this. I think more parents who have are dual-income families who have younger kids are sending their kids to our program, which is lovely. If that trend continues, the state, the ECC requires there's a 1 to 13 ratio. Private organizations, which I reviewed, is a 1 to 10. And it's up to the individual organization, the center, to decide if they have more younger kids, preschool or kindergarten, to even reduce it further. We're not even at 1 to 8, I can tell you for sure. I'm lucky if it were 1 to 12. And that concerns me. And it makes me wonder if perhaps, you know, the kindergarten fee, much like Hager Carline, might need to be higher.
Yeah, but I think that that's something that we need to, to your point, we need to see if that becomes a trend or not, or if it's one-off. I would suspect you're probably right. I think that we probably will see this as a trend. But I think it's too soon at this point in time to open that discussion because right now, we just want to make sure that we're covering our costs appropriately here.
I throw that out because that's on my mind.
No, I, I, I completely agree with you because even as you were saying it, I thought, yeah, I can see us another year or two following, going back to again, gathering the data points and saying, yeah, we're going to have to do something a little bit different.
And you'll be coming back to us with the information. And the level, this is the greatest level of understanding slash transparency that we have had about this program, certainly since I have been here. So it's, it's greatly appreciated. And it helps me be able to make an informed decision.
It helps me to recommend decisions. I mean, you know, for me, it's about killing the onion. And you are more than welcome to take a button. I'll leave it out for these folks, you know? I want you to have the buttons.
Any other questions, comments, discussion, please?
The kindergarten thing was my question. Was I going to say, have we thought about that? And will we be thinking about that? And so you anticipated my needs.
Very good. Would someone like to make a motion about an increase?
I'm going to withdraw my motion. I'll let someone else do it.
Thank you. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I will move that we increase extended day tuitions for fiscal year '20 by 3%.
I'm sorry, by?
Right.
By 3%.
Second?
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? Okay, all in favor? Oh, we're good, all in favor? Opposed? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Raina.
Thank you, Raina.
You're welcome.
Yeah, true.
So moving right along. We are at the part of our meeting where we are going to ask for subcommittee reports. Steve, do you want to report out your budget warrant?
Yes, we had a budget warrant meeting earlier this evening, and we went over the, the draft, the draft force presentation of the budget, which was presented by the budget director. And she answered some of the questions that, actually, she answered all of the questions that we had. And we did not look at the capital expense requests from the towns, but we did, our minutes are up to date.
Thank you.
Very nice.
Elise, I have to give Elise credit on that. They are all up to date and they are in good shape. And next, at our next meeting, which will be right before on the night, we will be looking at the expense reports or the expenditure reports for the month of October and November.
Thank you. Personnel, that's me. Well, we've been working on the manual. We want to give people more time to look it over, so we're going to put it on the next agenda to get our approval. And?
Did you know that?
Yep. And then the personnel subcommittee will work on a glossary and an FAQ.
Great.
Okay. Policy.
I just noticed that our October minutes, they had, they were approved, but they are not posted. So I'll make sure that we get those minutes from October 10.
Um, what?
Yes, yeah. So we, we had a meeting last week with Dorothy just to kind of try and clean up some of the health policies. Lisa met with us for some of the health and wellness policies, which has been great. She's going to get a report out to us in March about some, some, well, some changes she's continuing to work on. And then we also had a committee from the high school come and share some, their draft or their first draft of what we're, we're calling a harass, sexual harassment policy, but what we're, we're going to, the policy subcommittee is going to look at what they drafted for a policy and pull out protocol because they have a different plan than maybe the rest of the, of the district would have.
Teachers, administration, who's from the high school? Students as well?
Yeah.
It was her, yeah.
It was a good representation.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. And, yeah, so health and wellness. And we will be connecting with budget and warrant.
We're set for you.
Yeah, excellent. And there's some, just a few, like, from Section K that have to be tied up. So we're getting very close to.
And just, this is a one-off, and I can certainly share this with you online, but I did get some legal advisement. We had spoken about that, so I've got that, and I can just just ship it off to you. So that will help tie things up.
Wonderful. CPAC, that's me. I have nothing to report. Communication?
We have not met for a while, given everybody's chaotic schedules. But now, especially to help finalize or add any of our thoughts to the school manual, we will be meeting really soon around the holidays. And other than that, we have nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. Audit advisory, Taylor?
No, we have not met. The auditors will be beginning, will be beginning their work soon, but we won't meet until after that.
Okay, very good.
I could do an ERPF. I was at the meeting on Monday.
Okay.
Okay, I was at the meeting on Monday, and there were representatives from both Lancaster and the Stowe Police Departments. They're working, they're working for producing rendezvous points and, and pickup points. They're working for producing rendezvous points and pickup points. They haven't done a full, I guess they haven't done a full evacuation, I would say, of the high school yet, but that's coming up within the next couple of weeks, I understand. Okay?
Very good. Thank you so much. Items for the next agenda. We're going to move the approval of the school committee annual to the 19th. Anything else?
Consent agenda.
Oh, the consent agenda. Oh, I always forget about that. So, let me, yeah, I see, no, I see it. I just forget it. Anything to, I appreciate, I need it. Anything about the minute, uh, blah blah, meeting minutes of November 14th? Okay. The warrants of December 7th are there to be signed. And, yes, anything else for the good of the order? Yes, ma'am?
Did we not talk about the capital plans? Did we move that off or did we just forget to discuss it?
Oh, I think we forgot. Shame on me. Okay, we haven't adjourned yet. Pat? I'm playing Pat for this. Thank you, Elaine. See, that's why I'm not here. I'm totally out to lunch here. Okay, capital plans. Well, I beat things off, that's why.
I need to come play the game.
No, no, no. So I'll start with Bolton's capital plan.
This is, I think, more of an update until I have all three towns submitted. So you have before you Bolton's capital plan and Lancaster's capital plan for fiscal year '20. And there's also, we, I think Rob spoke about it at the last meeting about Hogan Associates coming in and doing evaluation of all of our buildings. Well, we're hoping to update this document, maybe not in time for the budget, but, you know, for the future, so we can really have a true five-year plan to present to the towns. We can, we'll send it to them after the fact, but at least they'll have this document and we can move forward with that.
So this stuff is in the town's budget, not in our budget?
This is in the town's budget. So we're not responsible for these types of expenditures. These are capital items. They are expenditures that are more than $10,000. And we present them to the towns, and they can decide whether or not this is something that they're going to do in a given year, or in some cases, it's absolutely necessary and they just need to be made aware of.
And I just want people to know that there's a whole process that goes on behind the scenes with these. It's not like we hand them something and we don't see them again, and they just go through and, you know, pick out what they choose to do. It just doesn't work like that at all. There are a lot of meetings, and then we have meetings with the finance subgroups of those communities. We have meetings with the town administrators over the, with these items. Sometimes the head of the DPWs are involved. And so it's a pretty extensive behind-the-scenes go-around on this. Now, it happened that Lancaster and Bolton, I had asked for theirs earlier this year than normal. That's why these are up here at this point in time. Because otherwise, you might not see them at least for another meeting or two. But they're done, so we thought we would bring them forward because we had to submit them already. So, and the other thing, and I know that you know this, but I think this is more for the community at large. Just because it's on a capital plan doesn't mean that we're going to get it. So I want to be really cautious with that, that people don't do a full ad and say, oh, my gosh, you're asking for $50,000 or $100,000 or whatever. And that's just not, that's just simply not how it works. So it's kind of like, this gives us a bit of a blueprint and some key talking points. And the other thing that will happen through all of this is Rob is heavily involved with this. So this isn't just about a money component. Sometimes, for example, too, I believe Orlando, I think, walked buildings this, today, with Sean, Laura, and Rob going through some of the key issues that we're experiencing over at Lancaster. So there's a, there are a lot of eyes that go to this. It's just really a blueprint that we use to work from.
Mike?
So typically, when something like this comes from you, Pat, we ask you questions. And so it's my understanding that this is really just requests of the district to the towns, and it's sort of in their purview and not that...
Right, because it's our responsibility to maintain the buildings. But in the case where something, if it exceeds $10,000, then we go to the towns for the funding of such repair or upgrade or whatever it may be.
Keeping in mind that they own the buildings, right?
They own the buildings.
Right. But I guess, so these are just currently in the request status?
Right, exactly. That's all it is.
This is really preliminary. We won't know until town meeting, actually, what actually makes it all the way to the end. Because they then go through all of these requests, decide what they can afford to do, what they feel is necessary. They make a decision.
Because they're looking at other town departments. This is our piece of the...
Exactly. You know, there are other concerns in the towns that they may have, that may go before us. So, and then they read this down to maybe just a few items. And they'll present that at town meeting. And then the taxpayers of the town will...
Decide whether to fund it or not. So this is just the beginning. Like, tonight is really just the beginning of a really lengthy process. And I'm assuming, because I wasn't here for the budget process, that we said this is our starting point. This is not something we want put on the newspaper headline that this is our new budget. I mean, I worry about that every year. And I see that our newspaper reporter has laughed. I just want to make sure that that was put out there. This is the starting point. Those numbers will be different come tomorrow. You know, that's part of the process. It's a lengthy process for us. The capital plan is the same.
Other questions for Pat are about the capital requests? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Pat.
Thank you, Susan. Have we covered everything else, Elaine? Have I got it? Anything else omitted? I asked about that, about the consent agenda, if anybody had anything.
I know that we approved the...
No, we don't do that. It's on the consent agenda unless we let, is that correct? Unless we let Alida know that we don't, it's by consent that we're cool with it. Did you have any corrections or additions? Okay, thank you. Okay. I think we might be ready to entertain a motion to adjourn. Anyone? Second? Elaine, all those in favor? Super. Thank you, everyone. Good meeting.